I am James Bell and tonight I'll be serving as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for July 10th, 2025. The first matter of business is citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to perform a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding any matter posted on the agenda was to sign up no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If anyone signed up to speak, they will have three minutes to speak. Staff will time each citizen and provide a warning when they have 30 seconds left. We had two people sign up. I'll call first Ms. Mary Kreitz.
Can you hear me now? Okay, perfect. Well, like I said, technology's great till it's not. My name's Mary Kreitz and my address is 4617 8th Street. I'm here to summarize the opposition to UDC Amendment 31, which proposes a carve-out for larger signage on select parking garages. The concerns are: One, the content that citizens could be subjected to since the state law says the city cannot control what is put on signs. This request is permanent and it goes with the building for all time, no matter who the owner is. So do you want your children or future grandchildren to potentially see this across from Tech? Or how about this? Two, in West Texas, a deal's a deal. In 2012, the Raider Park Garage owner said that the ZBA's seven-year reapproval condition was more than fine with him. That's straight from the minutes. The city should not change the UDC to appease one owner while disregarding all other businesses and Lubbock citizens. As you know, your purpose as a P&amp;Z commission is Lubbock's orderly development. According to case law, Farr versus Tippett, Texas 1981, this amendment would be preferential treatment which defeats a pre-established comprehensive plan and is essentially piecemeal zoning. It would be a failure to regulate signage in a uniform, consistent manner. Per the Texas Local Code, Section 211.004, zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan. This amendment fails to abide by any uniform strategy for signage. Instead, it carves out a special exception for a garage without justifying why it's entitled to special treatment. The Lubbock citizens opposed to this do so out of concern for our city. We've nothing to gain. Is an increase in signage area for a parking garage an improvement for the 272,000 people who live here? It does not. Lubbock is a pro-business city, and that's a good thing. But this appeasement is really anti-business. It's anti-business because it's an unfair monopoly to one business owner and a disadvantage to all the other businesses. It does not serve a good citywide purpose. We urge you to reject this unfair and ill-conceived amendment. Thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz. Next speaker we have is Stephen Falk.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Falk. I reside at 12112 Savannah Avenue here in the city. Very nice to know that we're not going to be dodging tornadoes tonight. I want to reiterate things you've already heard and bring up a couple that you may not have heard. This issue's gone in front of the ZBA upwards of three times, each time being rejected by members like yourself who have served on that board. It was rejected by the City Council as a variance at least one time, voted down. This is not a wall sign defined by the UDC. Those are billboards. Wall signs deal with the tenants inside the building. I don't believe at the moment that HEB or Gene Messer or whoever's on that sign are the tenants in that building. Those are billboards. Billboard, I believe, is relegated to no more than 750 square feet. Trust me, those signs are substantially bigger than their billboards. In fact, one has been removed except the backing on it on the east side has not been removed, but technically it's still a sign. It's still a thing that's up there. I want to remind you, let me back up. A variance was brought to the ZBA for financial reasons. That is not a legitimate reason for a variance to be granted. A variance is when you cannot use the property in any shape, form, or fashion, and it's the minimum amount of relief to make it work. Building's built. I would like to remind you of last time when Councilman Gordon Harris mentioned that he lost a very good acquaintance who died on the Marshes Drive Freeway below that parking structure. The concern is people focusing on those billboards going essentially 90 feet per second. In five seconds, they're going to go over the length of a football field. If their gaze is up there, they're now going around a curve. You need to take care of the health, safety, and welfare of not one person that is wanting to put those signs up there, but all the thousands of people that are going by on that freeway every day, in the morning, in the evening, throughout the entire week. That's really y'all's responsibility to take care of the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Don't let just one person prevail in this matter for financial reasons. Let all the citizens of Lubbock, Texas that go by there that may be focused on those signs take care of their health, safety, and welfare so they can go home to their friends and their family in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Next matter of business is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings. The June 5th, 2025 Regular Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to nothing. Have to count. Next up are the zoning cases. When we call up your zone case, these steps will be followed. The Chair will call the first case and will invite city staff to make their presentations on the case. The Board may ask questions, but Board comment and debate should not occur. The Chair will open the public hearing on the case. The Chair will call the applicant representative to provide any additional comment. The applicant will need to clearly state their name and address for the record and briefly explain their case. After the applicant has spoken, the Chair asks for anyone in opposition of the item to speak. Those speaking in opposition should give their name and address and then speak to the Board. The Chair will then ask for anyone in favor of the item to speak. Those speaking in favor should give their name and address and then speak to the Board. After the public comments, the Chair will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not hear any further comments from the public. First case that we have is, let me get my sheets put up here, is Zone, well, Zone Case, Item 3.1, Zone Case 3094D.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jamie McGar with the Planning Department, and this is Zone Case 3094D. The applicant is Jade Honeycutt for Despeness LLC. This is a request for zone change from Office District to Medium Density Residential District. Fifty notification letters were sent out and we received no responses. The property is located west of Cypress Road and north of Loop 289. Here's an aerial view showing a mix of single-family and duplex residential properties to the north and northeast, single-family homes to the east, and light industrial properties to the south and west of the subject property. The current land use map shows low-density and medium-density residential zoning surrounding the subject property on the north and east with light industrial zoning across Loop 289 to the south and west. The future land use map designates this property for commercial use. Here's a picture of the subject property facing south as well as views to the north, east, and west. Although the future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, the proposed zone change to medium-density residential is compatible with current land use and is proximity to residential neighborhoods. The proposed zone change is compatible with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The property is currently bounded by residential zoning districts to the north, northeast, east, and southeast. Although light industrial property is to the west and south, they are separated from the subject property by North Loop 289, which is a freeway. The property's location within an established residential neighborhood contributes to the proposed zone change being compatible with the character of the properties in the area. The subject property is located on Tulane Street and North Loop 289. The master thoroughfare plan, 2018, designates Tulane Street as a local street and North Loop 289 as a freeway. Local streets typically provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas such as neighborhoods, subdivisions, or local business districts. Freeways are intended to move high volumes of automobile traffic at relatively high speeds over long distances. Staff has no objections to the request. I can take questions at this time.
Does anyone have questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Jamie. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak? If you'd please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Thank you, City Council, for seeing us this evening. My name is Jade Honeycutt. I'm representing Despeness LLC. We are proposing to change this office garden tract to residential due to the surrounding areas also being residential. The adjacent lots are all single-family residents, about 1,450 to 1,500 square feet. We are proposing to build a single-family home that's 1,350 square feet on this land, and so that is why we are going for the change of the zoning is just because we are trying to get the, we can submit for permits under the residential. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. This is my first time at City Council, so. But yeah, that is what we want to do. Is there any questions that y'all might have for me?
Anybody have any questions for her? Okay, well, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the matter up for discussion. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So, I mean, this is my neighborhood, but I don't know what else they'd really pick there. I don't see a business going in on that little spot of land just because of the convenience and how hard it is to get to there, so I don't really have an issue with this.
I think it's like one, I think when they developed it first, they had every residential and they left that one spot thinking to do something else, but I guess they found something better, so. Is there any other questions? Comments? Okay, y'all ready to call the vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries eight to nothing, and this will be going to the City Council for the first reading on July 20th, excuse me, this one will be July 22nd at 2:00 PM. Next item is Zone Case Number 3.3, Number 3529.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Shane Spencer and this is Case 3529. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for Red Spike Development LLC, and they're requesting a zone change from low-density, single-family district SF2 to heavy commercial HC. The subject property is located north of 130th Street for future Loop 88 and west of Slide Road. We have sent out 38 notifications and received back four in favor and one in opposition. Here's that notification map. The one letter in opposition did not elaborate on their reason for opposition. Here's the aerial map. There are homes to the north and east and vacant land to the south and west. Here's the zoning map. Surrounding properties are zoned auto-urban commercial district AC and SF2 to the east, SF2 to the north and southeast, AC to the south across 130th Street, and city limits border to the west and north. The future land use map designates this property for both low-density residential and commercial land uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. And here is an exhibit provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for both low-density residential and commercial land uses, and this request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent zoning districts and land uses as well as the proximity to future Loop 88. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance of the Conference of Plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and would not change the character of the existing development. Location is along Slide Road and 130th Street, which is also future Loop 88, which are designated as a principal arterial and freeway. Staff has no objection to this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Is there any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Shane. We'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. This is a property that has been sort of partially sporadically developed over the decades, most of it prior to annexation. Since annexation, there's really been no real activity on this site. Our request is to basically set up what we all know of as the retail node there at Loop 88 and Slide Road. Mr. Spencer noticed that this was the future Loop 88. You drive out there, it is Loop 88. Construction is well underway out there, and I can't wait to see the activity that's bound to come along when that highway gets a little bit further down the road. Nonetheless, we feel like heavy commercial is a great zoning for this location, given its proximity to a major highway and one of Lubbock's more major arterial corridors, which is Slide Road. I wish we could zone the entire corner. We can only zone what we own at the time. That's why there are these little gap areas left out. We just don't control that at this point. There's no specific project on the books at this point. We just want to get this property teed up for what we think will be a large retail center at some point in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holman?
Thank you.
Terry. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
We're going to see a lot of these along future Loop 88.
And you're also going along Slide Road there, too, so I can see that. I think it's a one to come in. I just wish it wasn't so spotty with all the in and out, but I think it's going to, would be a good one to go. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to zero. Next up is Item 3.4, Zone Case Number 3525.
Good evening. This is Zone Case 3525. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for T Market Properties LLC, Series 5. They were originally requesting a zone change from Office District, Low Density Single Family SF2, and High Density Residential HDR to Neighborhood Commercial. As of today, they have since changed their request, and they would like a zone change to Neighborhood Commercial on the front half of this property and Office District OF to the west. Information on this requested change has been printed off and included in your packet. We have sent 54 notices. This project, this property is located west of Quaker Avenue, south of 124th Street, but we've sent 54 notices. We've now received back three in favor and six in opposition. Here's that notification map. There are currently three properties in favor, six in opposition. The five, actually, the six properties in opposition were concerned with traffic, privacy, noise, and commercial uses, and currently we are past that 20% margin, so when this goes to City Council, it will have to have a supermajority vote. Here is the aerial map. You can see the two properties, the property to the east and the property to the west. The property to the west, they were requesting Office District, and the property to the east, they are requesting Neighborhood Commercial. There are homes to the west, south, and north, along with commercial buildings to the north and garden offices to the east. The zoning map here shows HDR to the south and north with further SF2 to the north and to the west. To the east is auto-urban commercial and further OF Office District. The future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. Here's an additional exhibit provided by the applicant showing proposed buffer yards. The future land use map designates this area as low-density residential. Although the proposed zone change to Neighborhood Commercial and Office District is not fully consistent with this designation, it is in moderate conformance due to it being adjacent to existing commercial uses and its frontage along both an arterial and a collector street. Additionally, the Office District request would be acceptable in close proximity to surrounding residential zoning. The proposed zone change request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area would not change the character of the existing development. The proposed rezoning locations are along Quaker Avenue and 124th Street. The master thoroughfare plan, 2018, designates Quaker Avenue as a principal arterial and 124th Street as a collector. Staff has no objection to this request at this time, and I can take any questions.
Just to clarify, I know that previously when it came up and they were doing for the retail, whatever they were going to do, that was one that staff had objections to, correct?
Yes.
But as far as going to the office, there's not the concerns with that.
Yes. As you can see with the presentation and everything, we were in opposition to the western portion of the property because they're requesting Office instead of Neighborhood Commercial. We have no objection to the request in its entirety.
Okay, and even though they changed that, it will still go since the original objections was over the 20%. It will have to have the supermajority.
That's my understanding.
What was it that made the objections go away? Like from Neighborhood Commercial to Office?
Because Office is a lower-intensity district, lower-intensity uses. It's more appropriate to be used as a buffer between commercial and residential zoning districts.
Thank you very much.
The Office still allows them to do what they were trying to do with the Neighborhood Commercial?
Possibly.
Any other questions for Mr. Spencer? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Corey Dillon with AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I'm pinch-hitting for Will Stevens out on vacation, so I know a little bit about this, but not nearly as much as he would, but just wanted to say that, appreciate everything that was presented before. One thing that I'd like to point out, and I'm going to go back a couple of slides, we've increased the buffer yard here along the residential area to 20 feet, and so I think that was maybe a concession based on some feedback from the neighbors, and other than that, I don't have any other things to add. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them best way I can.
Corey, I know you don't know this case very well, but the question of will they be able to do what they want, I don't think this lets them do what they wanted to do originally. They've kind of changed the gears completely.
That's right. Yeah, one of the things that they were looking at doing back there was building a gem, and that's no longer in the cards, so that's been pulled. That's another reason for the late change.
Do you know what's going to be back there or no?
It's just speculative right now. Office, so.
So the front half is, what are you asking for in the front?
Neighborhood Commercial.
Neighborhood Commercial, and the back half is?
Is Office.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Susan McIntyre Dillon, own and reside 4405, 4407, and 4409, 124th Street. There is a little new information here this evening. I'm not being privy to, so let me just go forward, please. To me, planning and zoning indicates plans for something and then zoning to accommodate that project. At this point, the first part is missing. There are no plans. Mr. Too Good and I did have a discussion, and he's thinking of potential uses for this tract of land, and now I understand that moves forward a little bit to Quaker frontage, I assume, but I don't know what the dimensions are. At any rate, why would we agree to a zoning of NC which would allow for liquor stores or bars or drive-in or three facilities, restaurants, just to name a few, whatever Mr. Too Good might decide to fit in that space? Even worse, if the zoning is changed and a potential buyer might build on this property, it lies that boundary directly on the boundary lines of our property. I'm hearing now that that might be changed somewhat there. But anyway, currently, we live on 124th Street, which he was mentioning that street specifically, and it's home to several senior couples, our neighbors. They've lived on this property, street, for decades, and we enjoy our quiet little community. The zone change could turn our lives upside down dramatically, increasing traffic volume, lights, noise, and odors, potentially 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The current zoning is the SF2 Single Family OF Office District, which is fine, and he was just mentioning right close to us, the Office District, and HDR, High Density Residential. And that allows for the garden offices like the ones on the east side of Quaker, that attractive group of buildings, starting with the Lubbock National Bank Building, then going to the south with the garden offices, the high-end residential addition of Brook Heights, that entrance there, more garden offices, and finally Maverick Bank, which is currently under construction. Our vision, even if we're talking Quaker frontage, has been the use of that land that looks like across the street, across. looks like across the street, across, across Quaker from us that I just described. All of those garden offices appear to be occupied, so we can assume that that garden office space is a good fit and would likely do very well. In conclusion, it has been brought to my attention that high-traffic businesses like fast-food restaurants might bring in a few extra dollars per square foot to the developer over they and above the garden offices would, but what about the cost of those businesses to us, the seniors, that made the choice years and years ago to live in this neighborhood? This could significantly impact our ability to enjoy our property and our outdoor spaces, especially during the evenings and weekends. Please do not allow the negative impact this zoning would have on the quality of our lives. We urge you to reject this request, requested zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Anybody, excuse me, does anybody have any questions for her?
Ms. McIntyre?
If you could come back up, please.
With, with the changes that they've made as of today, in visiting with Mr. Too Good before the last meeting, before we went through the tornado, that was, I thought, what y'all requested was office in that back.
We did.
Is that not true?
That is true.
And so that's what he's changed it to?
Actually, it's not changing to that. It, it is already zoned to those office buildings in that, so in that back area, the, the part that is the L, that white building, that is our, our, our property.
Yeah, I knew that was yours.
Um, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm unclear because what we were talking about is the whole thing to be changed to that, um, the other zone.
So if you look at this picture, the green is high-density residential. They're trying to change it all to office.
I'm not sure. I think just the, I think it's just the, the other way.
Right, up in the front.
Yeah, the L shape would still, according to what I'm hearing, be the same.
Up in the front would be neighborhood commercial, the back would change to be office.
I believe, I believe, but I'm, I'm not sure.
I think it would have been really smart if Keith would have come and talked to you before tonight.
Would, would have been nice.
So the other question I have for staff is?
He did talk to me, by the way.
If she, if she waves her, like if she says it's okay, do they still have to get the majority at city council?
If we receive written, if, if you rescind your opposition in writing to bring it below the twenty percent, it would not require the supermajority?
Okay, I mean, that's it. I just want to make sure you understand. He was kind of trying to get where you wanted to get, at least that's what he told me.
True, and he and I have had that, that, the discussion, I think.
He just forgot to tell you today.
I'm, I'm, I'm very unclear at this point. What amount, what we're talking about, what, what?
We could go ahead.
Corey, let Corey, I think Corey can help a little bit.
See this right here? This rectangle.
Can you show us on the screen?
Certainly.
Of course.
So this right here, this section right there, is gonna be your, your office, that box.
Okay, I see, I see. Thank you.
And then this L shape here with frontage onto Quaker will be the neighborhood commercial like that there.
You know, I, I got you. I don't know what that distance is, though. You see, I don't know the yellow, I don't know how wide that is. I don't know how close that neighborhood commercial comes to, to our property.
Runs right beside, runs, runs right beside your house. Runs right beside your house.
That, that's where this, uh?
Well, and the office is fine. It's already zoned that way for the office. Okay, thank you.
That, that's where you've got the additional buffer that was added, landscaping buffer between your east property line and the backside of that neighborhood commercial. So the neighborhood commercial would, would start here.
I see.
Include this piece to here.
I see.
And then this part, portion back here would be, would be office.
Okay, I got it. What is, I can't get that. You see where that, what, right, what is that going to be right there?
A driveway. Wait, which one?
Or, or what is it zoned? Right there where that twenty foot shows, but what, I see that's a buffer. Uh-oh, sorry.
No, I did that.
You did that.
So this is currently, this is currently SF2 here. This is currently office, and this is neighborhood commercial, and this is, you know, apartment zoning here, and this is residential. So the plan is to make this blue and make basically this entire rectangle here red. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it still is right on the property.
It is, yes.
Pink, pink, Corey, pink.
I am still negative.
Did I say the wrong color?
You said red, it's pink.
Sorry, I'm colorblind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well.
I think, I think, I mean, they can change it. Before she gets to council, she can change it.
Right. And I mean, I think, I think if we go ahead and proceed with it and we have it, then they can have more discussions to get their spots, because I think what city council does and what they end up deciding doesn't alter what we decide.
I would assume Corey will. I'd assume Corey will guide Keith to come talk to you between now and the city council meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone well, else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussion. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, any discussion?
Uh, I have a question to the city. The west rectangle, is that landlocked? Like if nothing happens, you know, with these two adjacent properties, how do they get, is there easements or anything like that to get to that west rectangle or no?
The west tract of land? I couldn't say off the top of my head. I don't have a.
It'll just depend on how they choose to plot it. If they plot it in a manner similar to what's on your screen, they will be required access easements.
Any other questions or discussion?
I mean, there, there's a lot of growth on South Quaker. Anybody who's been in Lubbock for a meaningful amount of time has noticed South Quaker has changed quite a bit and is becoming more and more intensive throughout the years. I think the concession going to office there directly to the south of the residential home is a good option and has been demonstrated in the city, I think, in other places similar to this that has been approved in the, in the past, and so I think this was a smart move, and I think moving forward makes sense to approve it.
That's why I was asking about the easements, because if, you know, that, uh, west tract is not joined with the east tract that is currently owned by Too Good, I feel like that west tract will just stay empty for a long time, just because there's no really access to it. So it makes sense for it to all be one project.
Through, through plating, it would be required to have access, some sort of access easement to the front there. I don't.
But they're owned by the same person at this point, so like, he's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't believe they are necessarily separate properties. They're just separate
Zones.
Meets and bounds that are being zoned differently within.
His, his intent is to keep it all, and if you look at coming in where you see the driveway, that house is no longer there, got tore down and moved across the street. And he's gonna cut back across there. He kind of got the idea he was gonna lose, and so he switched all this up just at last minute. They just didn't.
And just to clarify, right now it is considered, if they were to plot it as one track, yes, but if they ever decided to plot it as two tracks, that's where the access easement would have to be, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, if y'all are ready to vote, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries seven to one. If I'm correct, Kristin, this one will be going to the city council on August twelfth.
That's correct, if it still requires the supermajority.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is item three point five, zone case number two nine nine three A.
Good evening. This is case two nine nine three dash A. The applicant is Mountaintop Engineering for the Worship Center, requesting a zone change from neighborhood commercial to auto-urban commercial. The subject property is located east of Upland Avenue and south of eighty-second street. We have sent twenty-three notices and received back one letter in opposition. Here's that notification map. The one letter in opposition was concerned about traffic and parking. Here's the aerial map. There are commercial properties, the north, west, and east. To the south are single-family homes. I'll correct that. There is a church to the north. The zoning map shows auto-urban commercial zoning to the west with SF2 to the north and south and office district to the east. The future land use map designates this property for commercial land uses, and here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant as well. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, and this request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering existing adjacent zoning districts and land uses. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and is compatible with the surrounding area would not change the character of the existing development. The location is along eighty-second street and eighty-third street, which are designated as a principal arterial and a local street respectively by the master thoroughfare plan. Staff has no objections to this request, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you, Shane. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here?
Good evening, Plan Zoning Commission. I'm Tommy Harms with Mountaintop Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Worship Center. So currently, the current zoning designation does not allow for a parking lot to be constructed here. That's why we're switching from NC to AC, and I've been coordinating with the City of Lubbock Engineering Department and the Traffic Engineering Department, so all access points are gonna be off of eighty-second street. There's a six-foot-high brick wall to the south of the property, so there will be no added traffic to eighty-fourth street to the south. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is we're gonna have a pedestrian crossing. That's why I've been coordinating with the Traffic Engineering Department installed, just to make sure that pedestrians will be able to cross the street safely from, because they're trying to get to the church to the north, because they currently don't have adequate parking.
That was the main question I was gonna ask, because that was one of the biggest questions, it was about parking, what the intent was, so thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward and state your name and address for the records. Thank you.
My name is Keith Sumner. I live at eighty-three oh two Saratoga. That's the corner of eighty-third and Saratoga. I talked to some of my neighbors, Dr. Johnson, he lives at eighty-three oh two Trenton, on the last hearing, and he had mailed, he told me he mailed something in on the last hearing. I don't know if he knew he was supposed to mail something in on this one also, but he said that he mailed something in against it, uh, but I, I don't know that he knew that he had to mail it in on this one. And I think the person behind me, Rod Byrd, also told me that he'd, on the last one, he had mailed in against it. I didn't mail in because I come down here, I was gonna talk on the last one, and then we, we had the tornado and the bad weather and we dispersed. But I'm, I'm gonna go real quick, because I've got limited time, I understand. We built our house there about twenty-three years ago. When we built it, Milwaukee wasn't even in existence. It was from Frankfurt to Upland. It was, uh, at that time, that building where the Worship Center is, was a skating rink, and back behind the childcare place was a swimming pool. They closed down at some point, and another church came in called Experience Life, and it's just like the Worship Center. After they were there for just a little bit, they outgrew the center. They had people parking in all the adjoining businesses, just like it is now. Like, uh, on Sunday, and this is just, isn't on Sunday morning. Sunday morning, they have two or three services where there's hundreds of people there, and you have people coming and going for each service, and you, they're already parking in all the parking lots over there, in the bank, even across Upland. At one point, they changed, uh, there was a vacant lot at eighty-second and Upland. They turned it into a parking lot. At some point, they, they closed in the swimming pool, they turned it into a parking lot. Right now, on the corner of eighty-second and Saratoga, used to be Arm Tech, and then they, they changed to another crop insurance place, and now it's TruNo. That parking lot gets full, the bank gets full, the dirt parking lot that they're wanting to turn into a parking lot gets full, too. It's so busy that they have to have law enforcement out there to go from the dirt parking lot to the church, and they're stopping traffic. It interferes with the traffic flow at eighty-second and Upland because of the, the stopping the traffic there, but they're only stopping it right there. The people that's parking in all those other businesses, they're crossing just wherever they're parking, going straight across from south to north. It isn't, if y'all, any of y'all have been to the fair on Fair Week, where the people are parking west of Avenue Way, and then they're crossing to the fair, it's similar to that. They do have law enforcement down there, stopping people where I'm assuming that they're talking about the crosswalk going, but it's not, it's, they still cross wherever they're parking at. It is very chaotic, and it's not just on Sunday morning, but on Sunday morning, it is, I think they have three services, and so you've got people leaving from one service, people coming to another service. Uh, it's really hard just to get in and out of our neighborhood, especially with the construction. Now, they're rebuilding Upland, they're changing it to a bigger thoroughfare, and it's really bad right now, because they've got traffic choked down to two lanes on eighty-second street right there, but even, and that's gonna be another two to three years, but Experience Life did the same thing. They outgrew the facility. Now, what they did is they went down Upland and built on a big facility, and they become part of the Trinity Church. We have three other churches there in the area. There's a Pentecostal church to the north of this. They have a big area, big parking lot, they have no problem. Uh, there's another Pentecostal church at eighty-second and Quincy, same thing there. They have a big area, big parking lot, no, no traffic. And then there's the synagogue at the end of eighty-third street. He referenced eighty-fourth, it's actually eighty-third. My property, at the back of my property, it's just catty-cornered to where the parking lot's gonna be. When they have their meetings, it's not just Sunday morning. They have meetings through the week and the evenings, and it varies in time. They have events on Saturday. It's not unusual that they have half a dozen food trucks out there, people parking on both sides of the street, and law enforcement isn't there to direct traffic then. You've got people trot, crossing eighty-second street, and if any of y'all have tried to do that, I've done it a few times just out of necessity. It is, it's like the old video game Frogger. Uh, it's very dangerous. And now, I'm, I'm older than I was twenty-three years ago, but it's, it's hard to get across, and it's even hard to get across at the intersection, but I, it's just not a good situation to have a big area on one side and a parking lot across the street. Turning Point Church had the same thing that, that Experience Life did. They outgrew their facility, they moved to movie sixteen. Uh, the Worship Center has already outgrown their facility, even with this parking lot. If they turn that, that into a parking lot, they're already using it as a parking lot. It's just a dirt parking lot right now, and it is just like, like I said, it's, it's not like what you would think is a church service. It's more similar to Fair Week. When they are having their worships in the middle of the week, they have their music turned up so loud that the bass is so loud. In my kitchen, I can hear the bass, boom, boom, boom. For a while, I could hum the tunes as they played, that it was so loud, and it's just, somebody's eventually gonna get seriously hurt or injured crossing eighty-second street. It's, it's just not a, a good recipe. That will probably be their largest parking lot. They have a lot of piecemeal parking lots, uh, around the church, and they're using other businesses' parking lots, but it's just not a good recipe. They, they build that big nice parking lot, even if they put a crosswalk there, you know, the speed limit there, I think, is forty-five miles an hour, uh, and even with law enforcement there, that doesn't preclude them from crossing anywhere in the next two blocks to the east or two blocks to the, to the west. They've outgrown their facility, and they haven't realized it, so if we change it to the, to the higher one where they can put, you know, different things there, uh, when they changed it from what it was for Arm Tech to go in there, uh, a friend of mine was the mayor. of mine was the mayor, Tom Martin, and he told me that that was going to provide 300 jobs to that area when it turned into Arm Tech. I was one of the primary people that was going to be against it. And he said, "We really need these 300 jobs." So we went from, I think it was garden offices to the, what it is now, so they could build the Arm Tech building. Arm Tech's long gone. The other crop insurance company's gone. Now Trueno's there. The same thing's going to happen to the Worship Center that, that it did for Experience Life. Even after they build the parking lot, they're going to realize this still isn't big enough. This is a danger to get our people that's going from the church that's parking on the south side of 82nd to the other. It's, it's, it's not going to work. But there is an increase on the traffic on 83rd right now. I don't, and it, some of it is with the church, where they're going down 83rd and pulling into the Trueno parking lot, then going to the church. But some of that's probably caused because of the, the construction, which is still going to be there for another two years, is what Dr. Johnson told me. He's a friend with the, one of the supervisors that's, that's putting in the road on, on Upland. They tell him that there's probably at least two to three more years of construction. And so, you know, it's, once they decide, yes, we have outgrown this facility, they'll leave, and it'll be us that's living behind there that'll be stuck with the looser zoning, you know? And I can already see what it's going to be, because they're already using it for that zoning now. They're parking in the dirt lot. And I'm, I'm not talking, it's, you know, the, when we had the skating rink there, and it was like 50 people, we're talking about hundreds of people. I don't know how many people go to their service on Sunday, but it, it's probably easily close to what Indiana Avenue has. And I, I think some of theirs is 300 to 600 people's per serving, service. And, and they, you know, the people's coming, there's people going. People coming, and people going. And it's just, it's, it's not what you would think. Like, when I compare it to the fair, that's more what it reminds me of. People crossing 82nd Street, a bunch of people crossing where the law enforcement has it stopped. But when the people down the street see that they've got to stop a block away, they shoot across the street, shoot across the street. So when we're leaving on Sunday morning to go to church, we're having to, like, watch, make sure that nobody's shooting out in front of us, our cars pulling out. They, the cars leaving the parking lot of Trueno now, they don't stop before entering a lane of traffic. They get there and boom. If the law enforcement has it shut down for pedestrian, they're shooting out of the parking lot. And, and it's just, the traffic is chaotic. And I do, even though they say there was only one person opposing it, I think the other ones mailed stuff in on the prior hearing. So that's pretty much all I've got to say, though. If any of y'all have questions, I'll be welcome to answer them. I, I would say, what, what would be great is if y'all could go out there sometime when that's going on before y'all voted, but you can't do that. And I didn't bring any, I was going to take pictures and video, and I thought, "I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to get up here and speak my mind." But, any questions? And the main thing there is, even if they change it to the parking lot, once they figure out that that's not going to work for them, they're going to move. And then us that's living right there behind it, and the parking lot's just like right on the other side of the fence, it's not going to stay a parking lot. It'll be something else. And it, it's just like Hobby Town. It was supposed to be of, garden offices. And now I've got Hobby Town that's catty-cornered to my front yard, where they have drones flying over my residence and remote car race cars racing up and down 83rd and Saratoga. So, you know, my concern's more, once they come to a realization that they, they have outgrown it, what's going to happen then with the looser zoning? And, and it would, it was originally like the garden office stuff. And the way Tom Martin explained it to me, it's like the area around the United at 82nd and Boston. The offices to the north of that was what that was all supposed to be zoned as. But then they went to where Arm Tech could come in there, and it's zoned even for what it is now. So if we go even looser than that, no telling what it could be. But do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question for you. So you talked about food trucks and other things going on, on the property now.
Yes.
Better describe, could you more completely describe what you've seen that they're doing with the property currently?
The Saturday after we had the, the hearing, we all had to leave, they had a car show out there. And they had all these cars out there, and then they had food trucks.
The, the church did?
The church did.
Okay.
And that was on the Saturday after the last hearing. I think it was the Saturday after. But that's not unusual, that it, they have events, and I don't know what they are, because I don't go to the church, but they have events throughout the week where there will be food trucks. Because they have not only the parking lot where the Worship Center is, they bought South Plains Electric Co-op, which is right to the west of them. They've got that parking lot. Then they've got the parking lot on the corner of 82nd and Upland. And they have law enforcement stopping the traffic on 82nd. But they have church members, I'm sorry, they have church members in the parking lots they do have with traffic vests on, out there directing traffic. You've got people stopping, going. And, and then they've got the parking lot behind the nursery, which used to be the swimming pool. But they also have people parking, they don't park in Hobby Town, because I think Hobby Town doesn't, you know, they run everybody off. But they are parking in what used to be some sort of sports thing, baseball training facility. They fill that parking lot up, which is next to the storage buildings. They fill up the daycare parking lot. They fill up the Trueno parking lot. They fill up the dirt lot. And the dirt lot's not all the way full, but it's pretty close to it. They fill up the Happy Bank parking lot. They fill up the parking lot on the corner of 82nd. And at the same time, we, we have those other churches that's also meeting, that there's traffic going to and from the church on Sunday mornings. But through the week, the, there, there's not a problem on any of that. But like I said, it's, there's stuff, it's not just Sunday morning, and it's not just Wednesday evening. Sometimes it's Saturday, sometimes it's Friday, sometimes it's Wednesday.
So you said, you said food trucks, bands, car shows, all kinds of stuff.
Yes.
They use it as an outdoor event.
Yeah.
For, for the, wait, let's clarify, though. The church does on that dirt parking lot?
No, 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 no.
Because the only thing we're concerned about is...
No, 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 but...
But wait a minute. The only thing we're concerned about is that one parcel of property. We don't care about all the other stuff.
They have the event where they're at now, people are still parking on the dirt parking lot now, going across there.
Okay. I, I misunderstood. I thought you said that there are food trucks on the dirt parking lot.
No, no, no. The food trucks are over on the church parking lots, you know, where, where it is now, and the corner of 82nd and Upland. But they currently park in the dirt parking lot, which is the proposed...
I was just missing, I was trying to clear that up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I thought you were saying that they're already using the dirt parking lot for...
No, no, no.
For events and other things.
No, they're, they're doing that now, and they're still using it. It's been used as a parking lot.
Yeah.
And when that stuff's going on, law enforcement isn't out there to stop the traffic. You've got people just...
Okay. Gotcha. That, that, that makes it a little more...
Does that enter it?
Yeah, it sure does. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing for a matter of discussion. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah. You know, we had, we had a number of citizens in here a couple weeks ago, expressing great concern about students running across the street from an apartment building complex to tech. This one, we've got even more people running across the street, doing the same thing. So I see this as, if they, if they turn it into a parking lot, I can see where they would use it as an outdoor event venue. More food trucks, more bands, more car shows. I, I think it, I just, I just don't think it's a great idea.
Sir, the public hearing's closed at this point.
I, I, I mean, it, when I, I guess what I'm saying is, the things that they're doing across the street...
Could they move it across there?
They'll move it into the empty parking lot. It's going to be, it's going to be an open space that they can use for literally anything.
So Kristin, do they have to change the zoning to have it as a parking lot?
Yes, because a commercial parking lot is a primary use of a property. It requires the AC zoning. And since this property is across the street, it's not even a budding where we could consider it as a development lot. It is standalone. It needs the zone change.
Okay. So what else can be built on AC besides a parking lot?
Sure. Many of the same uses as it's currently zoned, neighborhood commercials, so retail, restaurant, that type of use. AC would allow additional uses, like automotive uses, vehicle sales, car wash, things of that nature.
Car wash?
Mm-hmm.
It's our old C3.
Huh?
It's our old C3.
Old C3. Gotcha.
The thing is, like, they're using it as a parking lot as it is right now. So I feel like when it turns into a parking lot, that's less dirt. So it's almost a positive, until they get up and move to a bigger facility. And the, the future land use is commercial, so...
Yeah.
Even if it doesn't become a parking lot now, they sell the land, it comes in as a whatever zone case, that's the future land use for that track.
Okay. And I, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. It's kind of a, it's, it's not an ideal situation as it is, but I could see it at some point.
Yeah. I, I guess what I'm saying is, is if we're going to, if we're going to change the zoning on this, well, I don't think you need to change the zoning on it, because you can build what you need to build for that, for that development there. You, I guess what I'm saying is, you can build what should be there under the current zoning. I, I don't think you need to expand the zoning to build what we had planned on, or what the city had planned on, on developing that. But I just, I see it opening up problems.
Kristin?
So I want to...
That's my opinion.
Sure. No, I just want to clarify. So in the Unified Development Code, a parking lot as the primary use of a property, no other use, no other structure, requires AC zoning. So they could not just go and pave it and use it as a commercial parking lot today?
Right.
Okay.
So, so what, what keeps them from keeping using it as a commercial parking lot as it is right now?
They should not be, because it is not paved, it is not developed.
So, okay.
You cannot park on unpaved property.
Okay. So let's say they leave it as the zoning. They've got, build a small commercial building over there for storage of golf carts.
That would not be a permitted use.
Okay.
Again, you have to think of it as its own standalone property, because it's not, it is completely separate and apart from the church property. So yes, if they built something that was a permitted land use in the neighborhood commercial district and paved the rest of it, met the landscape requirements, everything, that would be fine.
What landscape requirements are required for, if it's a parking lot?
Yeah. So the Unified Development Code not only takes into consideration the total area of the property and gives, assigns a percentage, probably 10% of the area of the property has to be landscaped. There's also a point system. So in this case, though, it would just be the percentage, 10% of the lot.
Okay, I have a question. So right now, it is neighborhood commercial, right?
Yes.
So what can it be as far as neighborhood commercial?
So many of your light commercial uses, retail uses, a shopping center, a, a restaurant could be constructed here, a church, a daycare.
So even if we changed it to AC, if I'm correct?
Mm-hmm.
They could still use it with the food trucks. Am I correct?
Yes, food trucks are allowed in the AC district. They are not allowed in the NC district.
But they would be doing almost the same thing, just with different zoning, right?
Well, but they're using the food trucks on the other side. But I see what you're saying, but yeah.
So, yeah, so if you change it to AC and allow them to build a parking lot, now you can put food trucks on it?
Trucks there.
And food trucks, and is that accurate?
Well, yes and no. Yes. I should have clarified. Food trucks are allowed in the AC district. There are separation requirements from residentially zoned property. So it is too close to the residential property. They could not put the food trucks there.
So they can't put food trucks there?
You're correct.
Okay.
But a restaurant could be built there right now?
Yes.
That's correct.
But a food truck could not be.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
So, okay, so different buffer yards for parking lots versus...
10%.
So there would be the 10%. The point system is based on gross square footage of a building, so if there's no building there, that does not apply. A buffer yard would apply to the southern property line adjacent to the residential, or I believe, as Mr. Harms stated, they're going to do the masonry wall in lieu of the, oh, it's already got one, in lieu of the landscape buffer yard, which they're allowed to do.
It's just a traffic nightmare.
The future land use map just calls for commercial up and down 82nd Street, which neighborhood, neighborhood commercial fits into that designation as auto-urban commercial would as well. So it's conforming with the future land use plan as it is currently, and it would be if we took it to AC.
It would be.
You know, there's, there's good argument for, for both, keeping it neighborhood commercial due to it being adjacent to office, as that would be sometimes a buffer between the auto, auto-urban commercial further to the west. But there's also argument to turn it to AC because of the auto-urban commercial to the west. And there's a lot of auto-urban commercial up and down 82nd Street. And so I, I could see an argument for both of these zoning districts staying here. With that being said, I, I kind of wish I didn't know it was going to be turned into a parking lot, frankly. I think I would have, if I just took it at face value of just land use, I'd be more in favor of turning it to AC. But knowing it's going to be just a parking lot, right there, not on the hard corner, so the traffic control's a little more challenging, gives me some more concern.
I mean, if they would have, if they would have come in and said, "We're going to build, we're going to, we need it to be AC. We're going to build something on it," and then get the AC, and then go, "Yeah, you know what? We're going to build a parking lot now." I would have gone, "Well..."
Yeah, bad on us.
Yeah. Well, you can't see everything, but...
Yeah. And that's one of the things we go. We never really know. We have to kind of go on what they're telling us at first when we go. Robert?
I might not want me to speak, because I'm just going to call the question.
Good. Okay. We've got to call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
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 So show of hands, all in favor? Okay, motion fails two to six. This will go to the City Council on June 22nd.
July 22nd.
July 22nd. Yeah, I'm trying to get a month behind. Okay, thank you. Next case is item 3.6, Zone Case 3058H. That's a button?
Sorry, guys. Haven't had to turn that thing on before. It's kind of interesting. This is Zone Case 3058H. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for Red Spike Development This is a request for zone change from medium-density residential district to neighborhood commercial district. Thirty-six notification letters were sent out, and we have received zero in favor and 13 in opposition. Eleven of the opposition letters are outside of the notification boundary. The property is located west of Pontiac Avenue and north of 50th Street. Here's the notification map showing the two in opposition within the notification Here's an aerial view showing undeveloped land to the north, east, and west, with the single-family homes to the south. Although not shown on the map, the land to the north and west is currently being developed with an apartment complex. The current land use map shows medium-density residential zoning to the north and west, neighborhood commercial zoning to the east, and low-density residential to the south. neighborhood commercial zoning to the east, and low density residential to the south. The future land use map designates this property for low density residential use. Here's a picture of the subject property facing north, as well as views to the south, east, and west. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant showing the proposed neighborhood commercial zone. The future land use map designates this area for low density residential land uses. Although the proposed zone change to neighborhood commercial district is not in conformance with the resident, residential designation as proximity to 50th Street, the principal arterial street, makes the zoning change to commercial use appropriate. The proposed zone change is compatible with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The property is located along an arterial and the requested zoning district is appropriate adjacent to nearby commercial land uses. Although the property is currently bounded by low density residential zoning on the south and medium density residential zoning on the north and to the west, it is adjacent to neighborhood commercial zoning to the east and it fronts 50th Street, Street, which is a principal arterial street. The property's 50th Street frontage contributes to the proposed zone change being compatible with the character of other commercial properties in the area with similar frontage to 50th Street. The proposed zone change is along 50th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial, and west of Pontiac Avenue, which is designated as a local street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request, I can take questions at this time.
Can you remind me the definition of a principal arterial?
Uh, it's, I believe, 60 foot width, four lanes.
So arterials are typically five to seven lanes.
Currently it's only three.
Correct, correct.
It's three?
It's three.
Is it?
No.
That stretch of 50 is not currently improved to that arterial?
Maybe it's only two.
I can't say.
It's only two.
I got, I got some experience at LS Farms.
Yeah, me too.
So during the construction of Pontiac Avenue, uh, which we won't go into, part of that project was that the proponent wanted a stoplight right there, pretty much mandatory. We have to have one, and now he wants to change this to commercial with no stoplight.
I wasn't aware of any stoplight proposal.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here?
Good evening, I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates, 1601 Avenue N. This is, uh, what we've been developing with our company is a Westmont development. Our client owns this, uh, small remnant piece of frontage on 50th Street at the intersection of 50th and Pontiac Avenue. Pontiac is a collector, uh, connects to the Friendship School to the north, and it winds around ultimately through the residential neighborhood all the way over to Upland Avenue. So there's no question that at some point in time, it's going to be a typical signalized intersection like you would see at any thoroughfare and collector, 98th and Memphis, 82nd and Memphis, so forth. So we believe that this is a great candidate location for, um, some form of neighborhood retail. Uh, also recall that the comp plan, while the, the, the map doesn't show commercial along all of the thoroughfare from node to node, uh, it does make reference to the, the, the commercial is, uh, an expected use along the thoroughfares between the nodes, lighter commercial like the NC that we're asking for tonight. Um, also, I'd like to, I was not aware there was any opposition until I happened to just go through the backup that was posted online today. Uh, I'd like to show you one thing, if I can get going in the right direction here. Yeah, this, this help, helps explain it a little bit. Yes, there is apartments that's being developed to the north and west of us. Um, the residential, we were purposeful in how we set this up. The, the residential to the south, uh, you'll notice our requested area extends far enough to the west away from Pontiac such that the only residential to the south of us, south of 50th Street, uh, backs into 50th Street and is insulated from 50th by way of a little landscape strip and a nice barrier fence. So, uh, w- we wanted to point out that we, we, while we have residentially zoned property south of 50th across the street from us, it physically does not look at us in any sense, it's completely blocked off. So they, uh, when we did this phase of the resident development, we, we wanted to not have those residences have, you know, connectivity to 50th at that location. So yes, there is NC zoning to the east of us and Cata Corner to the southeast of us. Uh, we feel like this rounds out this corner. Um, it, it will be lower level neighborhood residential, I'm sorry, lower level ne- neighborhood commercial, um, that I think fits well at a location like this on 50th Street. 50th is not five or seven lanes today. The day will come, um, when traffic warrants, uh, tell us to do so, those will be expanded to five or seven lanes. So we're trying to tee this property up for sort of mid-mile retail use where there ultimately will be a signalized intersection. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey Terry, in your project, are you planning on setbacks sufficient to allow for five to seven lanes?
Uh, the rightaway's already dedicated, so that decision's already made for us.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, and you can, I can't tell from the photos and from the aerial map, is, is Pontiac finished?
Uh, it's under construction, as I recall. Yes, sir.
Cause you, you, yeah, I didn't get a chance to drive out there and saw.
And I'm, I'm embarrassed to say that I can't give you a, a, a firsthand account. It's been a while since I've been out there myself.
Yeah.
It's open.
Is it, is it open?
I mean, you can drive down it, but it's not done.
Not yet.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right.
Planning Commission member knows more about my project than I do.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion? Move to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
Robert, what were you saying about the traffic light?
Well, so where Pontiac goes back to the Friendship High School during the negotiations of all that, there was, uh, words and promises of a stoplight. We're not gonna make that commercial, there's too much going on right there. And it's ironic to me that we built apartments all around this without using that spot. And I thought about it when I was watching it go up, that we're leaving a corner for a reason. So here we are, looking at it, so I, uh... There's gonna be a lot of traffic when that school opens, coming out of there.
I agree.
And it's two lane currently, so. And nothing, I mean, that's not the proponent's problem that it's two lane. But it i- if they throw something down there right now, it's gonna get hectic in a hurry. And I also think that running down 50th Street, when you come across the railroad track, that's all residential on that side. Those are all 10 acre residential people at LS Farms. So I don't foresee any more commercial till you get to Upland.
Right, and I think we've already looked at Upland and 50th.
I think 50th and Upland is a five acre commercial track, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I mean, commercial, you've got commercial completely bordering the east, east boundary of all this stuff. And the future plan.
Yeah, east of, along the railroad track.
Right.
Yeah, between, between Pontiac and railroad.
Mm-hmm.
It's all, well, future, future plan for commercial.
Any other discussions?
No questions.
Ready?
Question?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All in favor of item 3058H, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's do it by hand, all, all in favor? Okay, it's two, all opposed? Six, motion fails. Two to six, it will be going to the City Council on July 22nd at 2:00 PM. Next item of business is item 3.7, Zone Case Number 3523.
Good evening, Board. I am Sam Brackeen with the Planning Department, and this is Zone Case 3523. The applicant is Keller Willem, Williams Commercial for William Gene Spurgeon. They are requesting a zone change from low density, single family district SF2 to light industrial district LI. The property is located south of 134th Street and west of Chicago Avenue. Eighteen letters were sent out and we have received one in favor and three in opposition. Here's the notification map showing written opposition from property owners within the 200-foot notification boundary exceeding 20% of the land area, which will require a super majority vote of six out of seven City Council members in order to be approved. These opposition letters cited reasons such as traffic and noise. The aerial map shows a storage facility outside of city limits to the north, a residential dwelling outside of city limits to the east, and manufactured homes to the south and west. The zoning map shows this property's owned low density, single family district SF2. The surrounding properties are zoned SF2 to the west and south, with the north and east being outside of city limits. Here's a map indicating the proximity of similarly zoned areas such as LI, Heavy Commercial HC, and Industrial Park IP. The future land use map designates this area for low density residential land uses. Here's a view of the subject property as well as views to the west, east, and north. Here is an exhibit provided by the applicant. Here is another exhibit provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for low density residential. Although the request does not conform to this designation, it would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent land use to the north and the LI zoning to the west along Frankfurt Avenue. The existing, existing development of this property is currently a non-conforming use, and this request would allow development that aligns with future land use. Therefore, this request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along 134th Street, which is designated as a local street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Why is the, uh, current use non-conforming already on the site?
It has, uh, the manufactured, um, I think it's, I believe it's a couple of manufactured homes there and, uh, and current UDC, those, those are not allowed.
This was probably one of those ones that got put into the city before and changed from transitional to SF2, am I correct?
Yes, this property would have been annexed in 2016.
That's the hodgepodge.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide of the objections?
Thanks. Okay. Thanks.
Leave it right there.
Thank you, any other questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Board, Jeremy Steen, 10210 Quaker Avenue. Just wanna give you a little context about the proposed project and answer any questions you have. Uh, like he said, this is an area of town that has a, kind of a patchwork of some city, some county, and it's got some commercial mixed in with residential, and it's just kind of a hodgepodge area of town. There currently on this property is five deteriorated, um, buildings, mostly trailer homes. And the, uh, I represent the buyer, and he's intending to scrape these buildings and build four to five smaller warehouses that would be, he's a, he's a car guy and he ha, he has this vision of like a high-end, nice garage for cars in this nicer area of town. And if you'll look at the, uh, the six page in the packet I put in front of you, there's a cleaner version of what he's in, intending to put and how he's, uh, intending to set this up. You'll also notice on there that we put the setbacks. This does have a hundred foot setback to the side and to the, to the rear for any abutting residential use. And there's also a 15-foot buffer yard that will be required.
Thank you. Stewie, is there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so how, what's, oh, it's 140 feet from the south.
That's how he has it planned, it's not a required setback, but that's his current plan. The required setback would be 100 feet from the rear.
So, okay, so like, I mean, I've seen some of these popping up in other cities and they're like, it's like basically a garage where you park an exotic car or a classic car or something.
Yeah, his intent was to build a bit of like a small community there. Uh, not to say that at some point there might be a small shop or something, but this is not a heavy manufacturer, heavy industrial use at all, it'd be a very light use.
Okay. Will anyone live there, or?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Steen. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Les Beatty, and I live at 5602 138. I'm representing Ben Menino, who lives at 5601 134. David Dominguez, that lives at 5516 138. And myself, I live in 5602 138. Those pink squares are us. And they're wanting to put a, a storage unit right there in the middle of us. And on the road, 134th, is solid storage units, all the way from one end to the other. And almost all the way to 1585, which is Loop 88 now. And, uh, we, we've lived there for 30 years. We don't want storage units up next against us. Uh, it's, it's our right. I mean, this land was veteran land when I moved there. And there's not very many veterans out there anymore, but still, we have the right to, uh, have our own property and not be put upon by storage units. Um, uh... We lived out there for, all of us for over 30 years. And, uh, it's not like we're not taking care of the place. If you look at the place, uh, it's, you know, it's not high-end. And they're, they're trailer houses, but they're our trailer houses. And they're nice homes, all of them are. So, uh, I just said, you know, I talked to all the other neighbors out there. They were, a bigger circle around there would all say no. So, uh, that's where I'm at. Got any questions?
No, I think we understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One quick question for you, I'm sorry. Have you spoken to the applicant at all?
Oh, to all the applicant? Oh, to the, to the guy with the green dot there?
Yes, sir.
No, sir, he doesn't live in there, in love with him.
Not the green dot, not the green dot.
None of the, the applicant is.
Perkun who proposed the stuff.
Huh?
Mr. Steen's representative.
Oh, well, he's the one that owns the storage units, of course!
Sorry, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing for a matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
I mean, what, the drawing that's proposed looks like it's gonna be a nice place, it's got trees all around it.
Big setback, a little more loss than what's there now.
Just 'cause you see a picture.
Doesn't mean it, I know.
That's true.
Light industrial is, is light industrial. Or, I'm sorry.
Or, I'm sorry. Yes, light industrial.
It's light industrial.
Yeah.
Kristen, can this be put on anything other than light industrial?
So, warehousing and storage is a limited use in the heavy commercial district, which means there's additional regulations they would need to abide by. I can check and see what those are. It could be that for some reason this property cannot meet those additional regulations and therefore needed a district where it was permitted by right.
So, what's the required setback for up against residential?
100 feet.
Okay. And it's a type C buffer yard, is that right?
That's correct, 15 feet.
There's only one more intensive buffer yard, right?
That's correct.
So, this is the second to most intensive?
So, the additional regulations in the heavy commercial district require that all operations be conducted completely within a building, outdoor storage must be screened, things of that nature. So, it's, depending on what their plans are for the property, you know, if it was strictly warehousing and storage and they plan to conduct everything indoors and if they had any outdoor storage, it was screened, they could potentially request heavy commercial district. It could be that they would prefer the light industrial, maybe there's additional uses they may want in the future.
But it's also giving them stricter?
It is, mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of a double-edged sword going to light industrial ended.
Are you gonna have storage outside, like, do you plan on having anything like that or no?
There's no plans to have storage, but, but again, these, this is a small project and they would have a little yard and so there could potentially be a little shop that would have a yard, but that would require some fencing and stuff.
So, with no storage, you can come back with a commercial zone rather than light industrial?
Well, we, when we initially started the project, we met with some representatives of planning and zoning and went over what we were looking at and they, we all thought that this would be the best zoning and even though they understood that there is some really stringent setbacks and that we have to have these buffer yards to anything that's single family.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Ready to vote?
Ready to move.
Y'all ready to vote?
All.
Okay, okay, we'll call questions on the case. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's do hands, all in favor. Two, three, five. All opposed? Motion carries five to three. This will go to City Council on July 22nd.
August 12th.
August, this, oh, because it's the, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, next zone case is item 3.8, number, Zone Case 3524.
Good evening once again, trying to get through this technical difficulties. All right, so this is Zone Case 3524, the applicant is CMS Properties for United Sky Capital, Alabazian City. This is a request for a zone change from office and low-density residential district to neighborhood commercial district. The property is located east of Oakland Avenue and south of 98th Street. Sixty notification letters were sent out and we have received one in favor and two in opposition.
Jamie, I think your mic went off again.
Did it go off?
Thank you.
There we go. Man, I'm batting three for three tonight. All right, so here's the notification map showing the one in favor and two in opposition. Here's an aerial view showing single-family and duplex residential properties to the north, single-family homes and undeveloped property to the east, developing multifamily properties to the south, and undeveloped land to the west. The current land use map shows low-density and medium-density residential zoning to the north, commercial and single-family zoning to the east, high-density residential zoning to the south, and commercial zoning to the west. The future land use map designates this property for commercial use. Here's a picture of the subject property facing south as well as views to the north, east, and west. Here is an exhibit provided by the applicant showing the proposed neighborhood commercial The future land use map designates this area for commercial and residential land uses. The proposed zone change to neighborhood commercial district is compatible with the commercial designation and its proximity to 98th Street and Principal Arterial Street makes a zoning change to commercial use appropriate. The proposed zone change is compatible with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The property is located along an arterial and the requested zoning district is appropriate adjacent to nearby commercial land uses. Although the property is currently bounded by residential zoning districts to the north and south, it sides auto-urban commercial zoning to the west and it fronts 98th Street, which is a principal arterial street. The property's 98th Street frontage contributes to the proposed zone change being compatible with the character of other commercial properties in the area with similar frontage to 98th Street. The proposed zone change is along 98th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. The staff has no objection to the request. I can take questions at this time.
Is there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? Thank you, if you could please state your name and address again.
Jeremy Steen, 10210 Quaker Avenue. I just wanted to give you guys a little context of this and answer any questions you have. So, the owner of this land also owns the adjacent auto-urban commercial land and we're getting this one zoned and after they met with planning and zoning, they decided to lower this to the neighborhood commercial since it does abut up to the single family. This does have 20-foot rear setbacks to that single family and a 15-foot setback to the side.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Have y'all met with the ones that objected, you know, their brain concerns that they just don't understand what the parcel is gonna be used for and how it's gonna affect them?
Yes, ma'am, I was able to reach one of two of them and they had some concerns about how the alley would work and traffic and was able to answer those questions. I'm not sure if they're here or not.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Steen. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for a matter of discussion. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion?
So, reading this, it says it's next to an assisted living facility. I didn't see that on.
That's primrose.
It's there on the southwest corner, adjacent to the side.
Primroses and no windows. Cut the windows off.
So, I will say at least going to commercial, they're going down to neighborhood commercial, which is lower than the others. I think that there was a concession on that part, it looks like. And I think with the position it is, it's not a bad location.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries eight to nothing. It will go to City Council July 22nd. Next case is item 3.9, Zone Case 3526.
This is Zone Case 3526. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Christian Ellis LLC. They are requesting a zone change from Low Density Single Family District SF2 to Auto-Urban Commercial District AC. The property is located north of 114th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. Thirteen letters were sent out and we've received one back in favor. Here is the notification map showing one in favor. The aerial map shows vacant land to the north, an assisted living center and vacant land to the east, vacant land to the south, and an equestrian center to the west. The zoning map shows this property is owned Low Density Single Family District SF2. The surrounding properties are zoned Auto-Urban Commercial District AC to the north, Neighborhood Commercial NC and SF2 to the east, AC and NC to the south and SF2 to the west. Future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. Here's a picture of the subject property as well as views to the west, south, and east. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent zoning districts and land uses. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along Milwaukee Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial street and 114th Street, which is designated as a minor arterial street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objections to this request and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Corey Doolin, AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I don't have anything else to add to the presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
Don't think we have any. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? I think it's at a commercial node location, a good one for it, so. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to nothing. Next case is item 3.10, Zone Case 3528.
This is Zone Case 3528. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for SWLLD. They are requesting a zone change from Low Density Single Family District SF2 and Auto-Urban Commercial District AC to Heavy Commercial District HC. The property is located south of 130th Street and west of Frankfurt Avenue. Eighteen letters were sent out and we've received zero back. The aerial map shows vacant land to the north, south, and east with a commercial business and residential dwelling to the west. The zoning map shows this property is owned Low Density Single Family District SF2 and Auto-Urban Commercial District AC. The surrounding properties are zoned SF2 to the west, south, and east with the north being AC and Heavy Commercial HC. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. Here is a picture of the subject property as well as views to the west, east, and north. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent zoning districts and land uses. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along 130th Street, which is Future Loop 88, which is designated as a freeway by the Master Thoroughfare Plan. Staff has no objection to the request and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? I'm gonna ask you to repeat your name and address even though I don't have it memorized.
Good evening, I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates, 1601 Avenue N., representing SWLLD LLC on this particular case. This is a little similar to the Loop 88 and Slide Road case we asked about earlier. It's a much smaller piece of property, it's not a, we don't see it as a big retail node, but nonetheless, we see this as a candidate location for HC zoning, given that it's on Loop 88 frontage. We all know that Loop 88 is well underway out there. So, the thing that makes HC work here in my view is to kind of help see it in context a little bit. Most of the yellow, well, all of the yellow zoning is yellow because it was annexed and just hadn't been developed yet, right? You saw the comp plan showing all this as commercial. The area to the north, which shows is 130th Street here, is Loop 88. The white area is Right Away, which has now been acquired and currently Loop Right Away. Little small chunk of commercial that dips down into that was some old zoning, which now has been acquired as Loop 88 Right Away. So, but if you'll notice, north of that, there is HC zoning in place on the north side of the highway here. So, we felt like sort of both, similar zoning on both sides of Loop 88 made sense at this location. It's pretty straightforward, I believe. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holman? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for a matter of discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in second, any discussion? Pretty cut and dry again.
Me too.
Yeah. Okay, so, go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to zero. This will go to the City Council on July 22nd. Last zone case we have is item 3.11, Zone Case 11893 GG.
Good afternoon Board, I'm Jose Villalobos with the Planning Department and this is Zone Case 1893 GG. The applicant is Seventeen Services LLC for WAG 2.0 LLC. They're requesting to rezone from Heavy Commercial to Neighborhood Commercial. The property is located north of Fourth Street and west of Homestead Avenue. Twenty-seven letters were sent out and we received zero back in favor and zero in opposition. Here's the aerial view of the property. There is undeveloped land to the north, east, and west. To the south are single-family residents. Farther north, there is Shadow Hills Golf Course. The current land use map shows the property to the east is zoned Heavy Commercial and to the northwest and south zoned Low Density Single Family SF2. Farther to the west, there is also High Density Residential, HDR. Future land use map designates this property for residential low-density. Here's a picture of the subject property as well as the views to the west, south, and Here's some documentation that has been supplied by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for low-density single-family land uses. Although the proposed zone change to Neighborhood Commercial district is not in conformance with the residential designation, its proximity to Fourth Street combined with the undeveloped City of Lubbock property serving as a buffer makes a zoning change to Neighborhood Commercial use appropriate. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located along Fourth Street and is appropriate adjacent to nearby commercial land uses. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property has access to Fourth Street, which is designated as a minor arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or his or her representative here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Bartman. I'm an architect with Seventeen Services located at 1500 Broadway. We're just seeking a downgrade in the zoning from Heavy Commercial to Neighborhood Commercial for the intent of building some garden offices. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you.
Always lockdown zones. They're always easy.
Always easy.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to zero. Will go to City Council on July 22nd. Before we go to our next item of business for consideration of the UDC amendments, we are gonna take a break until eight o'clock and we will see you back then. It's 8:02 and we'll go back in session. The next item of business and the last item is item 4.1, is consideration of amendments to the UDC. This is not a public hearing and we will not be asking for any input for the citizens. This will be basically a discussion amongst the board members. And you taking it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, the joint public hearing between the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council was held May 22nd, where we reviewed the proposed staff recommended amendments. You also heard from citizens regarding some additional amendments they would like to see added. I can go through the staff recommended list of amendments if you would like for me to, or if there are just certain ones you would like to discuss or ask questions about, whatever you would prefer.
Commission members, what are y'all's thoughts on this? I know that we can take them all at once or we can take them individually. I know that there is one of them that I don't wanna vote on together with it, that's number 31, which is the sign ordinance. I don't know if anybody else has anything else that they wanna pull out and consider separately?
Possibly the industrial one.
The setbacks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Were those ones proposed by a citizen?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that was section 39. Point 02, point 006, point F dash 2. Per the applicant's or the citizens' recommendation. Lastly, I think one other item that I don't know if ever got settled, it had to do with the single-family cottage definition, which would be section 39.10.002.
Did that fix itself with the new state law?
It did, but if the board wanted to go ahead and approve the amendment discussed to correct the UDC, that would be fine. And there was one additional citizen amendment. The couple who proposed it is here today in regards to the high-density residential district, which currently prohibits multifamily uses on the same block face as single-family residential or across the street from a single-family residential. So their proposed amendment was to remove that prohibition only within the high-density residential district.
Drew, on the cottage deal, the state law, September 1st is gonna allow for 3,000-foot lots anyway, so I think it's kinda irrelevant, we can just leave it in and it's gonna take its own course.
The state law will correct it, you're correct. We'll have to allow 3,000 square foot lots, 70% lot coverage. Today, the Unified Development Code limits the total square footage of the home to 1,300 square feet in the definition. So that was the proposed amendment, to remove that from the definition and just state that a cottage is a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet.
So if we move to change it, would our changes actually get into effect and enforced before the state law change?
Only, it would only remove the, it would not meet the state law definition or new change.
Timing wise. Was September 1st?
It would be approved five days before.
So you're saving somebody five days?
You're correct.
Okay.
The thing is, they're still a little bit different because when we take it off completely, the way it was proposed here, then we can build like almost 3,000-square-foot home on like a 4,999-square-foot lot because now it still counts as a cottage. So, because you can put like 55% or 65% coverage on anything below 5,000 square feet, right?
That's correct, you still have to meet the required setbacks as well.
Yep, so it makes it to where like it's big lots, or I mean, you can put huge houses on smaller lots, which covers cottages and then some.
So it does make a difference?
Yeah, it will.
So should we pull it out and talk and vote on it separately then? Would that be smart?
It is not on the list. It is the definition of a single-family cottage and it would be to amend the definition to remove the maximum square footage of the home and instead state that a cottage is a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet. And the intent of that is so you don't have someone with a 20,000-square-foot lot calling it a cottage, taking advantage of the reduced setbacks and the higher lot coverage.
Their main issue was also the coverage, they didn't know if it was, you know, including garages or not including garages. So I have, I guess, the proposition for that one that would kinda cover that, but not open it to where like it's open-ended.
Right, you're still gonna have a maximum lot coverage, you're still gonna have setbacks, you're just removing the maximum floor area.
But the allowed maximum coverage would be pretty big. Like for me, I wouldn't want more than 2,000-square-foot cottage, you know, on a lot that's less than 5,000 square foot.
So I understand what you're saying. Garden homes today are basically the equivalent of a cottage, just shifted over to the zero lot line. And today, a garden home is allowed 65% lot coverage. So it's essentially the same product, you just shift it to the middle of the lot where you have the five-foot setbacks on either side.
Okay.
And as we stated, the state law is gonna increase it to 70% lot coverage September 1st.
So how do we proceed? Do we, can we vote on the ones that we want that's in there except for the ones that we just discussed?
Sure, you can have multiple motions and votes depending on how you wanna divide it up, what you wanna vote on. So if you want to vote on the entire list, sans number 31 or whatever number you want to pull out, you're welcome to do that. And then if you need to have discussion on some of the citizen-proposed ones or any from the list, you have the others out of the way.
Why don't we look at the list right now and figure out, I know we're talking the numbers, but if we go to the list according to what the numbers were and say we wanna pull those to discuss separately?
That'd be great.
And then vote on the others. So I know I had number 31, I'm not sure...
That's the only one I had. That's all I had was 31.
What was yours, Drew?
I'm working on it.
I think that'd be easier if we all can look at the one instead of going 39.02, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, say the item number.
Mine's 31.
Maybe you could help me, Kristen, it's 39.02.006, is that actually in here?
In regards, in regards to...
That would be the setbacks for the industrial?
That is not on the staff recommended list.
Okay, so that'd be a separate one regardless.
So how would we pull?
We'd vote on that separately.
That's correct.
So we're gonna just vote on the staff recommended, okay. So we got for the staff recommended, the only one we're pulling is item 31, is that correct?
You're not pulling the cottages?
It's not in there.
It's not on the staff recommended.
So we're...
And the block face is also not in staff recommended, correct?
So first off, we can knock off the ones from staff recommendations, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for the amendment to UDC except for item 31.
Second.
So that is items 1 through 56 except for 31, is that correct? Make sure we got it in the records to be able to go for that. Yes. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to zero. So I guess we go ahead and move to item 31 since that was on...
That'd be great, sure.
31 staff recommendations. And you're so good, thank you for being so quick on that. I will go ahead and start and say, I'm opposed to this. I think it's opening up too many different things. I think it's one that is more looking to be spot zoning to cover one specific entity. And I think that entity has had their chances. I think it's gone through ZBA, I think it's gone through council and it's all been turned down and I see no reason now to come back and change it to benefit one group, is my personal opinion. And that's my opinion.
I agree.
Agreed.
I agree, so for clarification, if we don't accept this amendment, then...
It stays at 20%.
It stays at 20%. It doesn't eliminate the signs, it stays at 20%.
But don't they have, they've already had to leave part of it, correct?
I'm sorry?
So it doesn't eliminate it, but doesn't it limit what they have because didn't ZBA say their exception?
Yeah, they're currently operating under a variance and so you got on, if I remember correctly, the signs that are facing to, and Kristen, correct me, the signs that are facing back to the east, the sign that's facing to the south, those have already gone through, the variances have expired and they're currently out of compliance. The signs facing to the west, the HEB sign, is their variance hasn't come up for a little bit of time. It's coming up quickly, but that's when that one will come up. If it's, if that variance then expires, then they have to come in compliance with whatever the code is at the time. So that means if this doesn't change, then it would come to 20%.
What is the variance percentage right now?
I believe it's 35.
Okay.
And that'd be...
So they've basically become smaller if we don't approve that amendment today?
If they were to comply, that's correct.
Going from the 20%, which is currently allowed, to the 35% would mark a 75% increase in the allowable surface area of that sign. That's a meaningful, meaningful increase. And if we look at 20% on what the face of that wall would be already, it's already an almost 2,000-square-foot sign that's allowed currently. It's 108 feet tall and about 100 feet wide. So it's already pretty good-sized, in my opinion.
Now, and the 20% would be for all four sides, correct?
That's right, I believe that...
So you could put one on the north for whatever reason you wanted, there's nothing there now.
I think the 20% right now that they're putting is coverage that includes the north side, if I'm not mistaken. Or that 35%.
It's for each facade.
Correct.
Per facade?
Yeah.
20% on each facade.
My question is, is it a sign or is it a billboard?
So we do not regulate the content?
No, but I'm saying, I'm just saying a sign or a billboard because generally a sign you look at is advertising a business that's in the facility, a billboard's not.
Right, and that's, so that, in order to read, to determine whether the sign is talking about a business that is actually located there or not, you actually have to read the sign. And that's, we can't regulate the content of the sign, so it's just a sign.
Yeah, it's a, gotcha, it's a catch-22.
So when you say you can't regulate the content of the sign...
Unless it's something that is illegal, per se.
Ms. Price put up a colorful proposal for advertising businesses, is that, would that be allowed if they wanted? I mean, is that actually possible?
Unless it's something that is actually illegal, like pornography, then that is, that is something that could be regulated. But just advertisement of an adult business would not be...
Would not be illegal?
No.
Any other discussions? Okay, we will, now I guess, I guess we gotta do this because since we're supposed to be voting in the affirmative, if we vote for this, that means we're allowing the increase to 35%, correct?
Correct, so we would prefer a motion to approve the amendment. You can still vote however you want if you motion and second on it and then vote accordingly.
Moved to approve.
So you get that? If we're against it, we make the motion to approve it, but then we vote against it?
Are we done with discussion?
If you are.
I guess, if you got some more.
I like signs, I don't have a problem with signs, but the variance is out, that's that, so...
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, but signs, that's what, a lot of people, I don't know if they realize, the sign's gonna be there. It's not, I mean, it may change your size, but it's not going away.
Right, well, and I get that too.
So the distraction to drivers is still gonna remain.
Right, but you're going from a size we have now to bigger...
I mean, the laws are the law, the rules are the rules and we need to go back to the rules.
Great.
Okay. Just wanted to say that.
Somebody...
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving, okay, got it, a move to approve, we have the second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails eight to zero. This will also go to the City Council on August 12th. Okay, so now we need to discuss to the ones that were citizens' recommendations.
If you would like to, yep.
I guess, because I'm... I guess, questions, y'all?
We can pick them up one by one, I guess?
Yeah, which one would you like to start with?
So let's start with the cottage one.
Cottage, okay. So again, the cottage, current definition of cottage is limiting the maximum area of the residential structure. So staff's interpretation of that is the primary structure, including the garage, anything attached to that main home, is limited to 1,300 square feet. And so rather than having to come back and amend it every single time, you have 1,350 square feet or 1,400 square feet. We would prefer to remove that requirement, let the lot coverage dictate and then just put in that a cottage is less than 5,000 square feet. Is a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet.
And at that point, anything can be put in, you know, from 1,300 to up to, you know, a garden home shifted, which is the 65%.
Correct.
Until the state law changes and it becomes 70%.
70, mhm.
Okay. Makes sense. Questions, discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to allow up to 5,000 square feet?
To allow a cottage home to be, the definition of a cottage to be amended to remove the maximum area, floor area, and instead require it that it be on a lot less than 5,000 square feet.
Great, I just wanted to make sure we had it on the record instead of what we were talking about. Gotcha, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay.
Setbacks.
Setbacks. So I believe, well, unless Mr. Gray wants to discuss it, I believe you received a handout at the public hearing that listed a proposed amendment to the setbacks in the LI district as well as to monument signs in the LIGI and IP districts and in regards to loading spaces.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I fully understand the signage component of the request, quite honestly. Whether I agree or disagree, I don't fully understand it frankly. And I know Mr. Wilkinson, I don't think he's here tonight. But I know he did present the setbacks as it relates to, this is light industrial setbacks as it relates to the minimum side setback when it is adjacent to a residential use. If I'm reading that correct? And I think that he's recommending that that side setback go down from, is it 100 feet to 20 feet?
That's correct, that is his request.
Into a non-residential use to zero feet.
Correct. So within the light industrial district, the current minimum side setback requirement adjacent to a residential use is 100 feet and 20 feet adjacent to non-residential. Same setbacks for a rear setback. And the proposal was to change the 100-foot setback to 20 for a side, zero adjacent to non-residential for a side, and then rear from 100 to 10 and then 20 to zero.
So what's important to understand is we had a case that... So what's important to understand is we had a case that would, that involved this directly tonight, right? Where we talked about that 100-foot setback. It would go down to 20 feet, which is a meaningful decrease compared to what we were expecting this evening. And then, and then if it was adjacent to a non-residential use, it would go to zero feet, which would mean at the lot line. I don't know if I agree with that level of decrease frankly. I think that there needs to be something that is more, that's a compromise between maybe the 100-foot and this 20-foot that's been proposed. I'm open for discussion or thoughts on that if there's something. But I think Mr. Wilkinson was bringing up more of an infill property that he had. He provided some side plans that I think all of us maybe looked at where I think it was an infill property kind of on the east side of I-27 where there were some old homes there that he was adjacent to that he was talking about really makes this property hard to develop for him. So I don't know if that's just really a case-by-case basis in that situation.
I'm not, I'm not sure you want anything on the zero lot.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's asking a lot.
Case today...
I'm saying 100 feet's a lot.
100 feet's a lot. Zero is nothing.
Yeah, there's somewhere in the middle, right?
I think you got to stop there.
So what's the, what's the protocol? And if we choose to, is there a time for us to discuss this before it goes to council or is this it till next time there's an amendment? Because this needs a little homework.
Yeah, so, so this particular section, and I was not here when Mr. Wilkinson presented it, what section number would this actually be in the UDC that would be amended?
39.02, point 006.
Okay. So did we in our notice have 39.02, point 006? Which one?
It's not on this right here, is what we have to do.
As far as our notice that we sent out to everybody, it was not on there. It would be... We did? Okay, there it is. There it is. Six and a 39.02, point 006F related to setback requirements and required off-street loading facilities in the L1 zoning district. Okay. So then what, then what you can, you can do, you can actually take no action on it at all as far as the recommendation and bring a different recommendation back to city council at a future, at a future time. It sounds to me, based on what y'all are talking about and the changes that you're talking about, the specific changes you're talking about, it does, might need some more homework. And actually probably I might need its own hearing so that proponents and opponents can come and discuss that. And so probably go through a different notice as opposed to, there's no requirement, I think, that you actually do anything for it today if you do not want to.
I think that'd be my recommendation.
I think mine too. I think mine...
I don't want to make a snap judgment and try to come up with a compromise that's our compromise without, say, interested stakeholders.
Yeah, I agree.
That's fine. I just want to give one more comment. And if I could just make one more comment that may help with your discussion on this, especially if his concern is infill development. Number 23, we currently have a provision in the UDC for residential infill to allow contextual front and rear setbacks. So it wouldn't make a difference on the side setbacks, but our proposal is to amend this section so that it could be used in any district for those contextual setbacks. So that may assist him in some of these infill developments.
So basically, his adjacent properties next to it, then he can match that.
Match that?
Correct.
That would, that would make more sense that way.
And for the side, he can still go to ZBA if for whatever reason he needs to change that side setback, right?
He could, if he could prove a hardship related to the property.
So if we, if we punt this, when would it be able to come back up?
Well, I mean, y'all, you can, this is an advisory body for any type of zoning change. So you can do it on your own. You still then after, say y'all decide to come up with your own change, then you would still go through the notice process, the public hearing process, and it basically comes right back to you and then it goes back to the city council. So you can initiate it yourself.
Okay.
But we still need to provide notice when you do any type of amendment to the zoning code and have your public hearings and then, so y'all, y'all always have the ability to initiate your own changes to the zoning code.
Because the way we've been doing it is this, this, these changes come up, amendments come up annually, semi-annually. We don't do it, I mean, we do it on a regular schedule.
Yeah. And all this stuff is, I mean, as Kristen, I'm sure, has talked to y'all about and other people have talked about, a lot of these stuff, whereas as we're going through such the massive change to the UDC, that we see things, citizens bring things to us, developers, builders bring things to us, that, yeah, we recognize that we need to make those changes. So that's what most of these changes that have come to you have been, are those types of things. But that doesn't prevent this body from coming up with their own changes that they would recommend to the zoning code on your own.
At any time.
At any time. You just put it on an agenda and y'all discuss it.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on that one? Think we just leave it?
So we decided to table that?
Yeah.
Table that until we figure it out.
Formally a deal, right?
Is there any other ones we have?
I think the last one is the HDR block face.
Correct. So currently in our residential districts, the residential uses are limited with the requirement that if you're locating a two-family, multifamily apartment use on a block face that has only single-family homes or is across the street facing single-family homes, that is...